Welcome to the regular meeting of City Council, February 10, 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Gunter.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2019, there were 22 military soldiers killed in action. There were 57 firefighters killed in action and 135 police officers who were killed in action. Last week, Trooper Joseph Bullock from the Florida State Police, a 19-year veteran, was also killed while working. Tonight, I'd like to remember not only those individuals who gave the ultimate sacrifice, but their families, who will have to give the lifetime sacrifice for those fallen heroes. So a moment of silence for those families. Thank you.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dylan Murphy from Calusa Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Williams has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so.
Thank you.
Mayor Covielo?
Present.
Councilmembers Carriosa?
Here.
Cosdine?
Here.
Gunter?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carriosa?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's go on. Item six, recognition and achievements. Chief Lamb?
Mr. Mayor and City Manager Zurlag, if I can have you come to the front, please. While they're coming to the front, I'll let everybody know that this year, the Kalamazoo Fire Department, and we've never had a state recognition of the year. This year, we've had four. Today, we're going to recognize our third and fourth individuals recognized for their of-the-year achievements for the state of Florida. This is a commitment of an outstanding organization consisting of a lot of excellent individuals. So Fire Marshal Rayborn, if you'll please join me up front. So Dave Rayborn, our Fire Marshal here for the City of Cape Coral, is being recognized as the 2019 Fire Marshal of the Year from the Florida Fire Chiefs Association. The Fire Marshal is a job that's definitely necessary. It's a tough job, doesn't always get to make all the easy decisions, but definitely always has the safety of our community first and foremost. One of the things that happened this year that helped Dave achieve this excellence and this award is that we were able to receive a FEMA for $196,000 that we were able to put hearing-impaired smoke detectors in individuals' houses. People that are hard of hearing may not be able to hear that smoke alarm, and so we're able to provide those with those FEMA funds at no cost and really help out. How many have we installed this year so far?
So far, 524.
524 of those devices in our community. So that's very good. Thank you, Dave. At this time, we also have the Town Chief Matt Marshall and his family, if you guys would like to join us. Matt was recently recognized as well at the Fire Rescue East in Daytona Beach, Florida here in January as the 2019 Florida Hazmat Responder of the Year from the Florida Fire Chiefs Association. Matt is a renowned speaker nationally for hazardous materials and a sought-after instructor for hazardous materials as well. Our Chief of Special Operations for the City of Cape Coral.
Testing?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Carrie Runyon, Parks Recreation Director for the City of Cape Coral, and I am presenting this award that Sandra Greiner, our manager at the Sunsplash Water Park, received back in October 8 during the World Water Park Association Annual Show and Conference at the Walt Disney World Resorts. The Cape Coral Parks Rec Department is pleased to announce that Sandra Greiner recently received a 2019 Executive Board Award from the World Water Park Association. Executive Board Awards are presented annually to individuals or organizations for special accomplishments in the water leisure industry that have contributed to industry knowledge and expertise for the benefit of the World Water Park Association membership. Greiner is the only individual to be honored with an Executive Board Award this year. Congratulations.
Congratulations to the recipients of those awards. It's always great to see employees get recognized from outside of the city. So that's a fantastic accolade to their work ethic and the type of things that they do here in the City of Cape Coral. So congratulations. Okay, let's go on to the public comment on the consent agenda. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for input of citizens on matters concerning the consent agenda, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record.
Thank you. Mayor and Council Joe Kilrain, District 3. I'd like to keep things on a positive note here for a change. I think we're all a little bit responsible to come into council and making a lot of complaints and talking about controversial items. It's kind of nice to relate to something, I think, that unites us. And I'm speaking on three general topics on the consent agenda, and I'd just like to express appreciation for the progress shown on these three items, they being the police training station, the advancement of fire station number 12, and the renewal of the two charters, both for Oasis and Krista McAuliffe. I think that these are three aspects of this city that we do extremely well, and everyone should be proud of them, and I think we are. And it's very nice that we have these kind of attributes being reinforced with continuing investment, and we're putting our money where our mouth is. And I think it's a great thing for both current residents, as it is vital to the city, it also helps to attract new business and residences. So, Council, I appreciate all your efforts and support for these, and I'd like to ask you to continue to support them going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce East in Northwest Cape. I just have a question on item number nine, Resolution 4320. Do we know how much revenue, additional revenue, has been generated so far with the sale of the beer, wine, and wine smoothies at Sunsplash? Thank you.
For the record, Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. This evening on the consent agenda, we have a $2 million grant from the South Florida Water Management District for the Fort Myers-Cape Coral Reuse River Crossing Project. We are now up to $6.3 million in our grants for that project. Last week, we kicked off the engineering for that project. And tonight, it gives me pleasure to introduce Chauncey Goss, who is the Chairman of the Board of the South Florida Water Management District. He'd like to say a few things.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to say, you know, Chauncey Goss was appointed by Governor DeSantis on the South Florida Water Management District Board and became the chairperson of that. Also, one of the reasons why I believe we do have clean water today, based on his work and some of the things that he'll do going forward to benefit the City of Cape Coral. So let's give Chauncey a round of applause.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for allowing me to be here. For the record, I am Chauncey Goss. I am Chairman of the South Florida Water Management District. And no, I am not responsible for your clean water. It takes a lot of us to get that done, and you all have been a great partner. As you know, the South Florida Water Management District is a 16-county agency. We run all the way from Orlando down to the Keys, and when you come to Southwest Florida, the City of Cape Coral is our largest. So your constituents are my constituents, and you have a lot of them. We're really happy to have the partnership that we do have with you. And over the last 21 years, we've done about 27 projects in conjunction with you for an average annual expenditure of about $1 million. This one's something I'm really excited about because we have four things we have to do at the Water Management District. We have to do flood control, we have to do water supply, we do environmental restoration and preservation, and we do Everglades restoration. And this is a really neat project because it helps to marry a couple of them. We've worked with you on things like reclaimed water and wellfields and ASR, but these alternative water supply projects, this one sort of checks two of the boxes because it's alternative water supply, but it also is going to make sure that things are a lot cleaner coming out of the Calusahatchee. And I live in Sanibel, so I'm really happy about that. And I thank you all for doing this. I thank you for partnering with us. And I thank the Governor for asking for something like $40 million to make sure that these kind of projects can happen in the future. This is a win-win with the City of Fort Myers, with the City of Cape Coral, with the DEP, and with the Water Management District, and we're delighted to be your partners, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, and especially for being coastal, community-friendly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment on the consent agenda?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Christopher Specht, and my job today is to try in the next three minutes to convince you that after public input-
This is the consent agenda. You have to stop and come back during public comment, okay?
Have a discussion and hopefully vote in which you direct the-
I'm sorry, I thought it was public comment.
... city manager-
Thank you.
-who instructs his staff not to disturb or destroy the existing owl's burrow-
We're working on the consent agenda now.
... located at the corner of Bernice Brayden Park. Despite the spin from staff, FWC is not requiring the removal of the burrow.
It specifically states you can have-
Thank you. We'll welcome you back up during public comment. Mr. Zurlag?
Thank you. I know Mayor and Council know this, but the members in the audience may not, and this is a huge grant for the City of Cape Coral. And I also want to thank the City of Fort Myers because it wasn't long ago, probably three years ago, we were not in very good stead with Fort Myers. They currently have their south plant that dumps about 12 million gallons of water every day into the impaired Calusahatchee, and the quality of that water doesn't even meet our irrigation standards. And so through a successful negotiation with the Cities of Cape Coral and Fort Myers, we now have an irrigation line planned to have, number one, the City of Fort Myers improve their plant to the tune of almost $30 million. And number two, once that plan is improved, we will take the effluent through a line underneath the Calusahatchee River from Fort Myers to Cape Coral, and we'll use that water for our irrigation supply. So it has the multi-benefit of being good for the environment as well as cleaning the river again in the Calusahatchee. It'll help Fort Myers with a state-of-the-art facility for wastewater treatment. It'll help the City of Cape Coral for irrigation water. So I just want to thank all the parties involved. It was quite a struggle to achieve that.
Thank you. It'll play a factor also into maintaining the freshwater canal levels because we'll be getting water from Fort Myers, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak during public comment on the consent agenda? See you none, public comments now closed. They'll open up. Is there any discussion from council on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull item nine, please.
Item nine. Any other items? Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carriosa?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Councilmember Cosdine, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to answer the question that was asked about revenue from alcohol sales at Sunsplash, we have backup on the agenda. It's $55,900 in sales minus expenses. It comes to $37,900. Is that right, Carrie? Okay. And I pulled this item because I'm going to be voting no on it. I don't, I'm not going to make a big thing and try to convince anybody to change their minds, but I still don't support this, so thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Nay.
Carriosa?
Aye.
Cosdine?
No.
Covielo?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item eight, see, citizen's input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for input of citizens on matters concerning the city government to include resolutions appearing in sections other than the consent agenda or public hearings. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Roscoe. I would like to ask a question first off. Why is the report or the update on that investigation that's taking place on the city manager, why is it at the end of the meeting? What happened to open and transparent government? The citizens should be, that should be in the beginning. So most citizens would be able to avail themselves, you know, of watching that and seeing what the outcome is and what, you know, the prognostication is on when it's going to be completed. I think it's just a poor choice to have it at the very end of the meeting. It's a disservice to the residents and taxpayers of Cape Coral. The other thing is, what is the update on the trip to China? We haven't heard anything about China since you, a bunch of you people went there, you know, at a big cost, which we never got the final tally on how much that trip cost the taxpayers. How much did the bottom line cost for you people to go to China? You know, really, that question needs to be answered, and we haven't had an answer to that yet. And then there's been a report lately by the Secretary of State Pompeo, who warns governors and local governments and everybody else about Chinese infiltration into the U.S., and it's happening in Florida. There's, the Chinese government has been, this is quote, "The Chinese government has been methodical in the way it analyzed our system. It assessed our vulnerabilities, and it decided to exploit our freedoms to gain an advantage over us at the federal level, the state level, and the local level." And he added that Chinese Communist Party officials are cultivating relationships with county school boards and local politicians, often through what is known as sister-city programs, which was how that trip to China was put to the people. This is what you were looking for, sister-city program. You know, it's like, I sent an email to everybody on council, the mayor and council, to each one of you. I got one response from a council member, who will remain anonymous, and all he had to say was, "Fox, bah wah wah ha ha." Now, isn't that really good? That is so professional. He's the one that has no report ever, you know, and that man ought to be ashamed of himself. He's over there smirking like a jerk.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Previous timing, oops. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Christopher Specht, and my job today is to try in the next three minutes to convince you that after public input, you should have a discussion and hopefully a vote in which you direct the city manager to instruct his staff not to disturb or destroy the existing owl's burrow located at the corner of Bernice Brayden Park. Despite the spin from staff, FWC is not requiring the removal of the burrow. It specifically states you can have activities without collapsing the burrow, and since it's in the permit, there's no liability to the city. We have to consider our green infrastructure. Just as our growing community needs to upgrade and expand our built infrastructure of roads, sewers, and utilities, we also need to upgrade and expand our green infrastructure, the interconnected system of green spaces that will conserve the natural ecosystem values and functions, sustains clear air and water, and provides a wide array of benefits to people and wildlife. Green infrastructure is a community's natural life support system, the ecological framework needed for environmental and economic sustainability. And speaking of economy, more than 45 million people watch birds around their homes and away from home. Bird and wildlife watchers contribute a total of nearly $80 billion to the U.S. economy annually. Owls get rid of many insects, mice, rats, and other pests. Bird watchers spend nearly $41 billion on trips and equipment. Local community economies benefit from the $14.9 billion that bird watchers spend on food, lodging, and transportation. In 2011, 666,000 jobs were created as a result of birdwatching expenditures. This data was provided by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and I would like to see Cape Coral get a good chunk of those dollars and jobs. We should come up with a comprehensive plan to address all the issues at hand. So in the meantime, don't destroy one of our greatest assets that, once we chase it away, we will never get it back right where it will do us and them the most good. After citizen's input, please discuss and then please vote to direct the city manager to have the employees leave this nest alone at least until July so that we can explore our options. We should take the time to explore and implement a comprehensive system that integrates the burrow owl into our parks and neighborhoods, not one that chases them away. This is important because, once they are chased out of residential and commercial areas, what do we have left? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Kevin Black, Northwest Cape. And I'm here to speak about the location of the two rowing clubs in Tropicana Park. I have three points I want to make to council tonight. We want to make you aware that we have over 1,200 signatures so far about the Tropicana Park design. Of those 1,200 residents want the original concept plan that was provided and shown to us on the Gold Bond City website, and the city provided quarterly newsletter and September 12 survey in the sign that's posted currently still on Tropicana Park. That sign does not show the rowing clubs being located, so nothing's been changed. So we would like an update. Second, council member and others have made comments that there's a lot of misinformation out there about the design of the park, and there is. I just happened to read an article a week ago, and somebody cited misinformation. We're asking council tonight to share with us and update us on what's going on with Tropicana Park. Help us understand where the misinformation has come from. We would like to know, too. We all live there, we want to use the park, and we want to see the park developed in the most appropriate way. We understand there's a lot of talk about the leases. I guess the decision may have already been made that we're going to relocate the rowing clubs, but again, please provide us update on what's going on because we really don't know. While this, the Tropicana Park impacts us in the Northwest Cape, how this has been handled by council and others is a bigger call to the citizens of Cape Coral because you all might be next in this misinformation and how this is handled and was forced upon you. Third, we keep seeing emails and comments that state now is the time for the discussion on the two leases. We've heard nothing from the city about the leases and what we can do to discuss them. We would love to open up that dialogue with you. We'd love to hear tonight what you have to say about Tropicana Park and what's going on. There's an awful lot of concerns out there about locating the rowing clubs. We're not against the rowing clubs in the Northwest Cape. We'd love to find a place that we could all have the rowing clubs together in a safe, safe environment for all of us, the boaters and the rowers. And we feel that Tropicana Park may not be the place that is the most safe for everybody to use that waterway. Compound that with the city's desire to develop seven islands. Who knows what's going to happen with that in the future as a developer comes in, and now we have rowing clubs going up and down in front of seven islands along with additional boat traffic and whatever that developer may want to put on seven islands as well could further compound and clog up that narrow waterway. And believe me when I tell you, that waterway can get narrow very, very quickly, and accidents can happen, and I'm afraid the accidents will happen, and I think we need to consider other options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's the button again? Flip this on. Can somebody help me? No, a gentleman said it wasn't magnified enough. Oh, you hit it on me. Shame on you. Thanks. Let's see, they said it was too small last week, so can we make it a little bigger this week? Is that good? Great. I need you to help me.
I do.
Appreciate that. All right, I think we're ready then. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. Council, Lunivar, 47-year resident. I want to look at some different subjects, but I want to finish the last bit of my presentation about the CCPD. As we saw, that was proper performance of duty. They found no wrongdoing. And then we looked at all the profanity and the body cam, and I paid a lot of money for this transcript. So, you know, if that's proper performance of duty, I'm scared to think of what isn't. You know what I mean? And I know that sounds facetious, but it's the truth. I'm not going to put down the good officers here in the CCPD because there's a lot of good men and women here. And as Michael Jackson said, "Four bad apples don't spoil the whole bunch." Or was it "one bad apple"? I can't remember. All right, recommendations. Here's what I want to recommend, and you will get a copy of this, and we won't stop till we get it all out to Tallahassee, et cetera. As I said before, it's easier to fire a teacher than it is a high school diploma law enforcement officer with six to eight months boot camp. Effective immediately, all officer candidates have to complete their two-year AA degree- Effective immediately, all officer candidates have to complete their two-year IA degree. Officers currently employed have five years to get it. Even a substitute needs two years just to sub in Lee District to teach. It's like calling the cops on the cops, and I would like to see an independent civilian committee set up. I asked you to investigate, to review internal affairs, IA, decisions when the citizen is not happy because the cops are the cops. All officers take in service on bullyism and sensitivity training, just like teachers. Abolish if in place promotions based on number of arrests and number of citations. I've heard that goes on in some police departments. A statewide Department of Law Enforcement, DOLE, just like the DOE for the teachers, and they will manage and certify the officers, and if there's a problem, just like they do with teachers, they come down from Tallahassee. Ban all tasers by law enforcement agencies. They are harmful to civilians' health, and they've been overused. In fact, Mr. Vincenzi got tased four times. He's suing the Sheriff's Department. It is cruel and unusual punishment, and it needs to be banned, just like they banned paddling children many years ago when I was teaching. We could do that. It needs to be banned like cruel and unusual punishment.
Thank you, Mr. Navarre.
All right. Well, we'll do the LCEC next meeting. I got some more good things to say, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm here with a very unique problem. I moved to Cape Coral in 1984.
Your name, did you say your name, please?
Oh, my name is Ann Preston.
Thank you.
I moved to Cape Coral in 1984, and less than two years ago, I rented a mobile home out in Palm Beach and 75 area. And eventually I bought it. I put $20,000 into it to fix it up to sell. Unfortunately, some of these mean, hateful, vicious people who have nothing better to do with their life decided to target me, and they took me to court. They testified about the most inane topics, like I actually inconvenienced a man on his golf cart for five seconds. Wow, kill me. And it was all the same. My attorney was as good as a stone sitting next to me. I wrote notes. She didn't question anybody. She didn't have me testify. She didn't ask the judge for time for me to sell my home, which I listed in December. And I was evicted from the lot. I owned the home, but the lot I was renting, $800 a month. And I took the payment last Friday because that was the 31st. And when I went to the office, the secretary dropped her phone, ran around her desk, and started pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing me. And I told her what I was there for, and when she stopped pushing, I stepped forward and put it on her desk. Anyway, the manager of the park decided to break into my home, and he changed the locks, and he ripped the first sale sign down. And now, you know, the snowbirds are gone for six months of the year, but after only less than two weeks, they're saying my property is abandoned, and they're going to take it and sell it, auction it. The problem is, is for the past 12 nights, I've slept in my small, crowded, cramped, cold, freezing car with my cat in the backseat. And the safest place that I know to sleep by myself is at the Cape Coral Police Department parking lot. And I was getting out this morning to use the lavatory, and I saw an officer, Leslie Dunson. And I had dealt with her five and a half years ago, and if she had done her job then, I wouldn't be in the position I'm in now. But that's beside the point. She was hostile and mean and vicious, and she told me I absolutely could not sleep in the parking lot. And I wake up in the morning, I go to the bathroom, and I leave. I'm gone all day long. I come back maybe 9:30, 10 o'clock, and go to sleep for a while, and over and over for 12 days. And I would like you to ask Officer Dunson to stand down and allow me to sleep in a safe place because I don't know of any other place that's as safe as that department, lot, parking lot.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Richard Osman, and I live in the Southwest Cape. For many years, I was a plumber, and they always told me, "Keep everything flowing," whether it's the bad water or the good water. So the hardest thing I have now to do is give you four ideas and make one flow to the other. So the first thing I'm going to tell you is, I've got this cane, and I use it because I've got a bad leg. Well, you know what? It doesn't keep me from kayaking because our Parks and Recreation put a beautiful handicap kayak launch in at Saratoga Lake Park. And I want to thank Kerry Runyon of Parks and Rec for getting these things moving. Like, they asked us what we wanted at these herrings. Well, that was one of them. We wanted, and it's there. And I use it quite often. And now that I know that we're going to finally put that pipe in from Fort Myers to Cape Coral, then there's another reason that the water in that lake will be maintained at a higher level. And that comes to my neck and next idea. That Saratoga Lake Park is a very big park, and if you look at it, on the one end, as you come in, there's plenty of room for kayak storage. Now, I didn't say rowing boat. I'm for the kayak club. There's room there to do it, and even though the lake is not that big, you have an interconnected waterway that goes right over to Lake Kennedy. And I have kayaked that many times. And I'd say the only thing you're going to have a problem with, again, is the people on the lake protesting it. And you know, I'm on that lake quite often, and I'm the only guy on there, and I see boats hanging all the time, and nobody used them. They squawk and squirm about their boats. They fought the other kayak club, but we finally get it. And you know, there wasn't a lot of stuff in the way from kayak people. I'm all for them. Take a look at that Saratoga Lake Park, okay? And for you people that don't kayak yet, what are you waiting for? You're not getting any younger? Thank you.
Joyce East in Northwest Cape. You're probably maybe going to be able to answer this at the end of the meeting when you discuss the investigation, but I wanted to know if the investigation includes the business manager's contract. I understand that contract was signed on December 1 of 2019, but it was made retroactive to October 1 of 2018 and continues until December 31 of 2020 and can be extended to December 31, 2021. The annual salary for that position is $63,700. I just wondered why that contract was made retroactive.
Yolanda Olson, District 2. Today, I'm here as an officer of the Southwest Cape Coral Action Committee. Good afternoon, everybody, and sincere thanks for your service. Information from a public records request to the FWC. Cape Coral's owl burrow take history, 22 months, ending in December of 2019. Total of 266 permits granted to entities within Cape Coral for an average of 10.27 My membership is concerned about information put out at last council meeting, so I'm here today to talk to you further about saving the existing owl burrows at Sands Park. City commitment, city staff made a commitment to us at council meeting, December 2, saying they would do everything they could to keep the owls in place. Words are being used quite often of safely relocating owls and digging starter burrows. The reality here is there is no research which proves any methodology has been successful at relocating owls. And the public in general, I think they feel comfortable, but they actually think that we're caging them up and actually relocating them to another place, and this is not the case. Also about starter burrows, there is no research which indicates the success of starter burrows. The FWC says that starter burrows are not really a proven mitigation strategy. Marco Island has a brand-new study for starter burrows in place. I spoke with the professor from the university, and what he told me was that starter burrow successes depended on many factors, which we still know about very little. So there seems to be a lot of confusion about Sands Park and foraging, and this is probably more information than you even want, but I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible. Everybody's in agreement about what is written in the guidelines. There's no question about that. The question is the interpretation of foraging habitat, which is the reason staff gave you last week that they had to take the burrows at Sands. So let's ask you. Passarella was hired by AECOM last September. The park is 15.25 acres. The guideline is agreed upon. 50% would be 103 acres. There is no way that the city is taking over 50% of the foraging habitat. Thank you very much.
Dot Eppking with the Southwest Cape Coral Action Committee. Just wanted to continue with Yolanda's presentation on Sands Park and some of our concerns. The current topography of the park and the location of the owls would make for common sense that they could be not relocated but built around. I've been around construction for about 40 years, and looking at it and where there currently are, probably four out of five could be bypassed with current construction methods. And like I said, the topography there is very flat, so it wouldn't take much to go around the owls themselves. City Council and a go-forward legacy, just that with the owls and as we have with the presentations on many aspects, they are part of Cape Coral, and I think that they attract a lot of people coming in. I live in the Southwest on Sands Boulevard, and we have several burrows around that area, which we have a lot of traffic that comes around and actually views them. So I think to keep them as part of the Sands Park is common sense, and I think we can do that without much trouble in changing anything that currently exists.
Pasha Donaldson, Southwest Cape. I think some of you have seen this. It's called "Meet Your Neighbors," and it's in lights when you come across the bridge. And our neighbors happen to be the official city bird, the burrowing owl. I know the council has gotten a lot of information about the chamber owls, for sure by me and by others appropriately. And I guess I would say that our group is probably ground zero for what started at Bernice-Braden Park with the owls. And so I'd like to go back into time, which is August 17, when I got a phone call saying that there is a boulder on top of the owl's burrow, and the stakes were pulled. And so I quickly shot off an email to my eye, and I said, "Who put..." I'm going to read you it directly. "Who put the boulder on top of the burrows?" And he said, "Pasha, good afternoon. City of Cape Coral collapsed the burrows last week to prevent the owls from reestablishing in the area. We worked with our consultant on solutions to provide physical deterrence from remaining on-site. Our cheapest solution was materials on-site was the placement of a landscape rock, of which they needed a machine to put it there. We are checking the location routinely to make sure the birds do not return. You may or may not be aware, the city did not permit starter burrows as part of the take permit because we do not want the birds returning to this site." So my answer was, "I have called Tallahassee, and this was an illegal take. An amendment to your original permit needs to be completed, and I know this because I do takes. Please reestablish the burrow. Your consultant should know better. Very disappointed in the city to make this decision. If you wish to discuss, please call me. We don't collapse burrows for landscaping." "Pasha, I'm sorry you responded by calling Tallahassee. The city has an active permit until 2020 for the two burrows on this site. The one we collapsed last week was in the exact same location as the previous one we collapsed. We understand there are going to be disagreements on the city's actions. Red, white, and boom is the reason for the taking of the landscaping." Of which a meeting followed up with the city manager and the assistant city manager and my guy, Paul Klingon, to discuss what happened. Johnson Engineering hired an agent to do the take. The agent has worked for this city for probably at least 20 years through the UEP, doing owl takes, gopher tortoise takes, et cetera, et cetera. No way should he have approved or even removed this burrow illegally because he knows he would have had to pull another addendum to that original permit. That's the history behind all this. Can I continue?
Just a couple more sentences.
Okay. So the main thing seems to be with the city that these owls during 4th of July, where the VIP tent wants to go and a picnic table wants to go, seems to be in the way of this incident. As of... This was emailed to me last July 5, 2019. This is after they took the original takes. This is the little owl. There were two of them. I don't know what happened to the other one. But this was the owl during the whole event, as tables were set up, tents were put up, fireworks happened, et cetera, et cetera. He was homeless, but you know what? A month later, he came back with his little honey, which is where we stand now. Where this burrow is, is a safe place. The city has applied for another permit, which was approved, unfortunately, for a five or 10-year contract that if 20 burrows show up, they can automatically take these.
Thank you.
Okay, summary. What I'm asking is that there be a compromise that this particular burrow stay. It is in a safe place. Friends of wildlife would not jeopardize the safety of an owl, believe me, even with July 4. When you have other events downtown, you have bike nights, you have all these other burrows, those owls survive even without a tent around them. So we're asking that perhaps a compromise can be, leave this owl burrow. If other ones appear, go ahead. You have the permit to remove those.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Seeing none, public comments now closed. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Newlin. Ms. Ann Preston, I'm sorry about your situation. What I'm going to do is give the chief contact information at Lee County Human Services, Human and Veteran Services, so we can give this to you. They should be able to find you resources in terms of your emergent homeless situation and be able to help you find a safe place for you and your cats. So I'm going to give this to our chief.
I appreciate it. I've already talked to them, Goodwill, Habitat, Salvation Army, you name it. I've turned over all kinds of stones. I've put ads on. I got a... This one guy's home was totally a hoarder, filthy, dirty. Another guy wanted to clear his bedroom with him. Another one's on the east side.
Right. I realize we are very limited in our homeless, emergent homeless care.
It's a safe place.
Sure.
It is safe to me.
Sure. I just think that while I'll let the chief maybe speak to that, my concern is, is that, you know, obviously, you're one resident, but if we had a lot of other residents, it would become an issue. So what we need to do is address the... So what we need to do is address this, and the only people I know are in Lee County. And what I will do tonight, when I get home, is I will email my colleague, and I will let him know, give him your name, and let him know that you'll be contacting him so that he can hopefully be able to find a solution for you and quickly.
I wish my hands, I have a cat, so I'll hold from when I
That's going to be a huge issue. Yes, that will --
People will be worried, stuck in their
Yep. That'll be an issue. Yeah, you're right. So I'm not going to tell you what to do with your cat, because people are funny about their pets. So I get it. But Chief, if you could explain maybe, you know, why it's not really safe or good for her to remain in that parking lot?
Chief Newlin, Cape Coral Police Department. I did speak a little bit ago, too. We're going to go outside and go over some other ideas I have, maybe kind of find her a place to stay. Obviously, it's not recommended that she stay in the parking lot, but has a couple of locations as well that maybe she could check, and we're going to try to help her out so we can find her a place, a safe place that she could stay at.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, just real quick, you know, I don't want to get into too many details on the owls. I know I've responded to several emails here today and recently regarding the owl issue at the chamber. And I think what I'm waiting for is to see the cost of, should these owls be hurt if we don't collapse the burrow? If they get hurt, what will our fine look like versus collapsing the burrow, which is $600 per burrow, to my knowledge, from the information that I received from staff? So I want to kind of wait and see what that looks like, I think, before I make a decision on it, because I don't want anything to happen to the burrows. Thank you, Mayor.
Mrs. Zerlark?
Thank you. About 4:10 or 4:15 PM today, I had a burrowing owl update from Kerry Runyon, our Parks and Rec Director, as well as Mike Ilchism, our manager of Public Works. And if I may, if the time is appropriate, I'd like them to come up and have them tell
Mike Ilchism, Senior Manager, Public Works. As a result of several phone calls today and all the requests for information and possibilities to maybe do something differently, Kerry and I reached out to the permitting staff that assisted us with the original risk analysis that we used to supply the permit and also helped issue the permit. And so we were able to speak with them this afternoon, concluded around 3:30. We came to see the city manager, but you all were in shade meetings, so we had to wait till you were finished. So one of the things that, I'll reiterate, the FWC told us originally that they cannot require any agency or individual to pull a permit. That is on the discretion of the person holding the event, doing the construction activity, and that still stands. In addition to that, once they issue a permit, they told us this afternoon that they cannot force us to use the permit either. So now we have discretion on whether or not we execute the permit or we don't. Several things came up in regards to not executing the permit. Just because we have an incidental take permit, if we do not follow all of the seven points in that permit, which is pay the mitigation fee, which is, just to clarify some information, we ended up with a three-year permit for eight burrows, not the original five and 20. We scaled back. All eight burrows are $600 apiece, but you have to pay them upfront, so you have to send one check for $4,800. But it's calculated per take, $600 per take up to eight. So step one is execute the permit. Step two is send a payment to the fund, and then it goes through a series of other steps. You have to monitor the nest. You have to scope it, make sure it's not active. And if it's not, what I always say is safely relocate the birds actually is considered harassing. You basically go up to them and move them out of the way before you collapse the nest. To me, that's safely relocating, and you're not just dropping the nest on top of them. So I use those terms. I know, I realize there is a gopher tortoise relocation permit, and some of that may overlap, but I use the term safely relocate because we're not harming the species itself. So, and so eventually, you get to the point where you collapse the burrow. You report it that you took the burrow, and then you do your mitigation of your on-site burrows. If we do not follow all of the steps in that permit, we were advised today that we will be culpable for the take of that species if something happens during the event. There's no way around it. So we specifically asked, okay, if we decide not to execute the permit and set up a 33-foot buffer, as is being suggested, can we do that? And they said, yes, absolutely. We cannot require you and force you to use the permit. But if you do, and we are called because something happens, or somebody says, hey, there's a firework event going on, and we think the noise is disturbing the eggs inside there, a law enforcement officer, we were told, will show up, do an investigation, and if they find that there is a nest that's active and there's damage occurring because of our event, we will face penalties, and we will wind up in court defending ourselves, knowing that we had the permit and didn't choose to execute it. It would be very hard to defend that type of case. So we have asked all this. This is very similar to what we were advised in the beginning, which is why we went down the path of doing what we did last year, which was getting the permit, collapsing the burrow, safely relocating them for the event. You see, there's pictures of them still alive, and then they came back afterwards. That's where we're at today and what we were advised this afternoon.
Mrs. Zerlark?
Thank you. Mike, Kerry, I was also advised this afternoon that there could be possible criminal penalties. Is that correct?
Yes. And so we had kind of wanted to probe a little bit as to what those penalties would be, because we thought, well, certainly if the penalties are less than $4,800, it might be compelling to just pay a penalty. And we were advised that that is not at the discretion of the FWC permitting. They would file a case, the city would defend it, and it would be up to the state's attorney's office to determine the level of that fine and penalty. And in addition to that, there could also be the possibility of people facing jail time.
I'd also asked to have that in writing on what I was told verbally today, and I'll certainly share that with City Council and anyone else, Pasha Donaldson as well, as well as anyone else that's interested. And the good news that has not been mentioned yet is that there was a request early on not to do anything until July. And that's our recommendation, that we wait until the nesting season is over with and then execute the permit at that point in time, sometime in July, or maybe late June.
Now, the question, though, is all of this based on the fact that we went to get the permit to begin with? Because if we never went and got the permit and just left things alone and let them, would that still be the same repercussions? Or is it because we decided, staff decided, to go get the permit to collapse the burrow and try to move the owls?
Yeah. So it's, staff decided to go get the permit in order to be protected from the fines, the penalties, the jail time, and the accusation of harassment or take.
So that would still be there whether we got a permit or not?
Yes. If we, by us hosting the event at, in the immediate vicinity of this burrow, all of that activity would be considered harassment and could be subject to that. So what you do now that they're protected, prior to 2017, when they became a protected species, we had discretion on what to do. You know, we could move an event, we could move a building, we can do that. Now there's this prescribed set of parameters and guidelines that we need to follow. So with that in place, last year, we went forward and got the take because it was in a place that was not, you know, brought people to them. We executed that permit. It was, it said valid till 2020. That's why we got into that interpretation issue on earlier this year when it was, or earlier, late last year when it was collapsed. So we ended up amending that to require, to get a longer permit so we don't have to do this every single year. It may be that they don't want to leave, and even though we collapse it and they move away for the event, we can go in and do the landscaping, they can still come back. But if we go to have that event again, they still, we still would need to utilize that permit. So the permit is sort of like our, the city's insurance plan against the fines, penalties, and all the court costs defending ourselves from hosting the event in the vicinity of the owls.
Councilmember Gunter?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any questions on this topic. There was another topic I wanted to discuss, so if anyone has, wants to
You want me to come back to you because I've got another light on?
Sure.
Councilmember Walsh, did you want to talk about the owls?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. So what happens if we collapse the burrow, we wait till July, till the ninth hour, closest to our event as possible, and we collapse the burrow according to the permit guidelines? Is it possible after the event just to reopen the burrow?
Part of our permit requires mitigation starting to burrows at an off-site location. So we would, we would not be doing it there. We would be doing it at a different location.
Could we do it at the other location, because that's according to the permit? Could we also reopen that actual burrow on July 5th?
I don't have that answer for you right now, but that's something
Would we inquire with, and find out? Because then we would have our insurance policy. We would collapse the burrow for a day, and then we could reopen it. So the owls will be homeless for one night instead of having to find a new place. So just that thought. And then the other thought that I had is I looked at the map of the actual event, is why not just do away with the VIP tent altogether and make it for the owls instead? But then you did answer that we have it as an insurance policy. So that negates that one. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to
Okay. Councilmember Stock?
I wanted to ask whether it was possible to do what we do on that side of Cape Coral Parkway, do it on the other side.
I'll answer that one. No, the other side isn't as large, and where the fireworks are, down at the bottom, are you talking about just the VIP area?
Yes.
Yeah. We use the other side for just spectators, because number one, it floods. The south side floods, if we have a torrential rain like we had like two years ago, and we all stood in the tents with knee-deep water. So we don't want to put that on that side, along with, we also have changes with our diagram and how we set up. Sometimes, before last year, we had that area, it was with the children's area. So we do make adjustments as needed, depending on the landscaping and what we're doing for that event. And that event, we don't, it's not just a one-day thing. It's almost a week before, and then the event, and then we have a post. So, you know, the trucks and everything are in and out there at least a week before, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the owls? Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. This might be a question for Dolores or Mike. I'd like to see any cases where someone has actually been prosecuted for taking a burrowing owl, burrow, if that exists in Florida.
We can call back and see if it has happened. It's relatively new, so I'm not sure. I haven't heard of any, but maybe there's a quicker way to have Dolores's office search than
Okay. Thank you.
I think the good thing here is we bought some time. You're saying nothing's going to happen until July. Am I correct?
Yeah. Our recommendation, within 48 hours of doing any take, activities on the site have to occur. So if we were to do it, let's say, execute it tomorrow, pay the fee, start it, we would have to start doing stuff on the site by Thursday. And we're not planning on that, so there's certainly time.
Thank you. Councilmember Gunter?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we could get a update regarding Tropicana Park as far as the rowing club? I know one of the things that I had asked for earlier was if there was any alternative locations for the rowing club. Also, my understanding, it's only the one organization now, because the kayak club apparently is dissolving their business. And I know we had talked about two parcels next to Tropicana Park, and I was wondering if staff's had a time to take a look at that and have a recommendation regarding those two parcels next to Tropicana Park.
I'll be happy to start the answer and then turn it over to Kerry to delve further into it, to catch anything that I may have missed. But before doing that, I just wanted to go back, if I may, just to the owls for a second, because Jessica and I had a conversation, either through text or voicemail. Initially, the plan was to have a decision on relocating or collapsing the burrow by February 15th. Upon further investigation, we thought it would be best to do it once from now. And that's, that was the reason for that, that change. In terms of Tropicana Park, I'm going to start out by indicating that about two to four weeks ago, I had met with John Bashaw. And John Bashaw is the president of the Northwest Neighborhood Association about the canoe kayak club, which I believe now is defunct, as well as the rowing club in terms of trying to find a site for them. And have a commonality of interests between those two groups, as well as the Northwest Association through John Bashaw and staff. My role was going to be essentially to have a little stakeholder group and then facilitate a response of commonalities. And if I could not achieve that, at least for Mayor and council's benefit, let you know where the, where the interests lie from all the parties and what possible solutions you may have moving forward. And that meeting is scheduled, I think, for either next week or the week after next, February 19th, I think it could be.
Correct.
And so we're waiting to have that performed. One of the issues that we brought up was the possibility of, in lieu of Tropicana Park, I'm not saying it would be a better place, but in lieu of Tropicana Park, the Seven Islands has property to the east of it, off Burnstour Road, with canal access, and that could be considered a possible alternative. I wanted to talk to the group about that possible alternative location. There was an issue, we currently have an RFP out through the company that council selected, CBRE. That small part is part of it, but I don't think there would be any detrimental effect to have that be an alternative. However, I did ask Ricardo to do a mini pro forma in terms of seeing what that square-footage area would have to be against a possible development and what the revenues would be in coming in from that development on that parcel compared to Tropicana Park, which essentially is a park. And so there'll be an answer to that in the next couple of weeks. And did I miss any other questions, sir?
No, I think that answered. So hopefully, within the next two to four weeks, we should have a better understanding of what direction we're going to be going in. Is that
Yes, sir. In fact, again, I'm hoping to find commonality of interest between now the rowing club and the association. But if I can, I'll identify where the differences are and then share it with City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to expand on that, Kerry?
Only thing I want to expand on is we have not put together a lease agreement yet and discussed it with the rowing club. We're still in the process of putting that together with real estate, and when we do have that, we will be able to bring that forward as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I think first off, what we need to do, I understand working with a lease agreement, but I think what we need to do first is make sure where we want to put it. That's kind of, that's putting a cart before the horse. So is that how we're, the direction that we're going is trying to determine the best place first and then do the lease agreement?
That would be our preference, my preference, sir, yes. First cite it, then determine the elements of the lease agreement that would be systemic to that particular property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just going to address, you know, as a local mayor, I'm not privy to the details of the former director of the CIA and Secretary of State Pompeo regarding things that potentially could be happening with China. I will say that the intention there was based on the fact that we have several businesses in our city, one who has a very large facility in China. The initial reasoning was to try to prompt some economic development and job creation in our city based on a relationship. But I will say, based on recent remarks that Pompeo made at the Governors Association, based on the civil unrest that's taken place in China, the ongoing health concerns with the coronavirus, the relationship now is on hold, and I'll leave it at that. And I'll leave it at that. The only other thing I want to ask, Mr. City Manager, we had a resident come up and asked about a retroactive contract. I know you're a signer on that. Maybe you could explain the happenings on the contract employee that signed the contract over a year later?
I'll be happy to do that. It's not part of any investigation that I'm aware of, so I'll be happy to explain that. Mr. Murphy is the business manager. And again, my recollection is that we first posted for a full-time job. I can verify that. And then when we didn't get the applications, we went out for a contract employee. That is a cost savings. When you hire a contract employee that was an employee of the city, you save all of your pension costs. And the actual dollar amount, I think, is substantially less in terms of the annual salary compared to the last person that held it. That said, my recollection is that Mr. Murphy wanted some changes to the contract. I said no. And so, he went without a contract under the same terms and conditions, much like you have a labor contract and have the same terms and conditions until that contract is approved, even though it may be after the date when the contract expired. And that's the best analogy I can think of. The good news is that there were no changes to the contract. So, there was, when I renewed the contract to the date that it expired, there was no additional pay or benefits. And so, everything essentially was the same. And if I'm incorrect, I'm going to ask Connie Baron to stand up, go to the microphone and say, "John, you're right or you're wrong. These changes were made." So, because Connie was involved in that as well. So, it's just more than my memory that serves as being an answer to that question.
Connie Baron, Assistant City Manager. I'm not apt to say that my city manager is wrong. But he's not wrong. But just to expand just a little bit, because there... His contract had expired, but he still continued to work for the city. And since there was no break in his employment, it was appropriate to have the contract be retroactive and cover that period of time that he was still working for the city. So, that's why it was retroactively dated. He had continued to work, no break in his employment. The terms of the contract did not change from the prior one that had been signed.
Councilmember Stout?
Yes, I'm... Connie, I'm interested, if you know. What was the savings over hiring, well, as compared to the former business manager and the present business manager? Or do you know that?
Well, off the top of my head, I would say, just from an annual salary-wise, it was somewhere around maybe fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. But that prior employee who had benefits associated with the position as well, this position has no benefits. So, that adds value to him.
Thank you.
I'm not one to beat a dead horse, but the one problem that I had with the contract not being renewed is that the old contract stated, "In the event... In no event shall this agreement extend beyond September 30th, 2018." And the agreement did.
Yes.
So, I just find that inconsistent with what was written. And I find it also somewhat perplexed when you have two high-level employees that are supposed to have a contract signed and negotiated, that it would take well over a year for that to happen. So, I'm listening to the response as to why there was supposed to be some negotiation. I mean, I know I sat down and negotiated with the city manager in a matter of a week or two. This took well over a year before we put a new contract in place. So, it just doesn't pass the smell test in my eyes. And that, as in writing, says that it should not have extended beyond that date, and it did. So, I just find that to be inconsistent. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I can give an example, and that is that, using my contract as an example, my contract indicates that I would be... Have a review by city council annually, and you would annually publicly indicate a performance indicator as well as a salary increase if warranted. I turned down an automatic 4% increase based on performance. And a new council came in two years ago. I believe Mrs. Cosden was, at that time, the business manager. And she, when Rick Williams became the business manager or office manager, Rick asked to work with me on a salary increase, and that didn't happen for a year. Then Jessica and I worked for almost a year on a salary increase, and that didn't happen either. I don't think anything was disingenuous. It just took longer than anticipated. That's my response.
Thank you. Councilmember Curiosa?
We are beating at that horse. By charter, the city manager has exclusive right to deal with contracts with any and all employees. It doesn't come to the council. The city council has just about nothing to do with employees that work for this city. That's why the city manager is the city manager. It would behoove us to familiarize ourselves with the charter, to know what we are allowed to venture into and what not. We're going to be sitting up here quarterbacking and pot-shotting the city manager over every city employee move. We, again, will be violating the charter. We should not be doing that. We should be working on other events, other issues, ordinances, and everything else that the council is designed to do and leave the hiring, firing, suspending, promoting to our city manager.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. Just a follow-up question on the business manager. Is his position 40 hours a week, or 20, or 30?
I'm not sure. I think it's... I think it's 40 hours a week. I'd have to go back and look.
Less.
I think it might be less from the contract. So, I just want to make clear that when we talk about the salary and the savings, we're actually... He's actually getting paid more than the previous business manager when you look at the hours, when you compare hourly.
Again, I'll have to check that out. There's also savings in terms of not having any pension liability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Okay, let's go on item 8F, appointments to boards and committees. We have two openings for the Planning and Zoning Commission, along with two alternate vacancies as well.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, before you this evening, our appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, two regular members and two alternate members. Applicants are here in the audience if you would like me to call them up to the podium for interviews.
Yeah, yes. I'd like to see them come up and say a couple of words.
John Bashaw?
Mayor and city council members, my name is John Bashaw, and I live in northwest Cape Coral. I'm currently an alternate member on the Planning and Zoning Board, and I'm applying for a regular position on the Planning and Zoning Board. I spoke to you last year when I applied for the alternate position, and the commitment that I made to you was that I would have a command of all of the details and facts related to any issue coming before me on the board. I've done that. I don't bring long-term Cape Coral knowledge to the Planning and Zoning Board, but what I bring is the ability and the desire to research the issues deeply and to make a determination based on my findings. As I research the issues that come before me and before the board, the things that are important to me are the commercial and residential tax-based deficit, segregating incompatible uses, and ensuring the quality of life for the residents, all of which seem to be linked to density. I commit to continuing to do the deep dive on all the issues presented to the Planning and Zoning Board, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Gunter?
Just one question, and each one of the candidates could address this question as well. I'd like to know how long you've lived in the city?
For the record, John Bashaw, I lived in the city... I moved to the city full-time in July of 2013.
Thank you.
Thank you.
William Gilbert?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Living in the southwest Cape, I have been a resident of Cape Coral in District 3 for 11 years. I am also a member of the nuisance abatement board, which, due to the good work of the police department and the city, has not had to meet in the year and a half that I've been on the board. As a... My family and I have lived in the southwest Cape, and we're very excited to see the growth and all of the things that are starting to come to Cape Coral. We moved here during the recession, and certainly there has been a lot of abandoned homes and a lot of building and a lot of things that could make life better in Cape Coral, and we're starting to see those now. I'm just excited to be part of that. And as an alternate position, when the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to send my name forward for the alternate, I see this as a learning position, as a position where we get a chance to look at all of the different plans and so that in the future, as well as the position becomes available, we can get on full-time. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Long?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Keith Long. I am a lifelong resident of Cape Coral. I currently reside in northwest Cape with my wife and two children. By trade, I'm an attorney practicing in Fort Myers, but throughout the state of Florida in business, alcoholic beverage, and land use law, specifically regarding land use, which ties in directly with my interest in the position and the vacancy. I work with multiple municipalities throughout the state of Florida with regards to commercial zoning, and I feel like that experience would lend some valuable insight to the board with regards to how certain codes and those sorts of things are interpreted, drafted, and of course, implemented. As I said, I've been a lifelong resident, so I've seen the city go through many changes, where it's been, where it's currently at, and, you know, where it possibly could go in the future. And I'd love to be a part of that, you know, through responsible planning and zoning on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert O'Connor?
Hello, council and mayor. My name is Robert O'Connor. I have been a resident of Cape Coral since 1974. I was appointed as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission almost two years ago. And I've been honored to serve in that position, and I would love to continue that in a permanent... Excuse me, a permanent position. I don't have any agenda when it comes to the items that come before the Planning and Zoning Commission other than I have lived here for 45 years, and I would like to see Cape Coral to grow and expand to the best that we can possibly make that happen. I'm a commercial real estate advisor that I deal with land uses and contracts all the time, so I am familiar with it. I feel I have the aptitude to serve this position well. And again, I'm honored to have been there, and I look forward to being a permanent member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab Orbaker?
My name is Tab Orbaker. I've been a permanent resident since April of 2018. What I would like to add, though, is my parents retired to this area in 1979. My brothers followed shortly after, so I have spent much time Cape Coral, Fort Myers, North Fort Myers, Sanibel, all over the areas. We've traveled here for vacation, as I've gotten those free vacations off of my parents over the years. We moved here for two reasons. My wife wanted to continue working as a geriatric nurse practitioner, and of course, this is a great area. She is currently working in both Cape Coral, Lehigh Acres, and Port Charlotte. Cape Coral is a great central location for that. I'm the retired house husband taking care of all the other activities. I spent 39 years as a professional engineer designing and building food and beverage plants all over North America. So, I bring that engineering talent to look through drawings and specifications. And prior to the relocation here, I spent a little over three years on the planning board from my community, which was in upstate New York, much smaller than Cape Coral, same issues, same type of applications came before us. I really enjoyed it. I missed one meeting in three-plus years. That's the meeting when I bought my house in Cape Coral. And I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity. And if it works out, great. We love it here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stout?
Yes, I... Since there are two openings for a permanent member, and we have two alternates that have applied, I think it just kind of makes sense to move them up.
Do you want to make that nomination?
Yes, I will...
Nominate those two?
I will nominate Mr. Bashaw and Mr. O'Connor to move into the permanent positions.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, call to roll?
Yes, Your Honor, before I call roll, I would just like to mention for the record that the vacancy occurs at the end of the month.
Okay.
So, once the vote occurs, it won't be effective until February 28th.
Okay, we can live with that.
Thank you. Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Curiosa?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, so now we have the alternate positions, and we have three candidates, all which were very good. So, I think we'll just poll council to give the top two.
Certainly. Gunter?
Gilbert and Long.
Nelson?
Gilbert and Long.
Stout?
Gilbert and Long.
Welsh?
Gilbert and Long.
Curiosa?
Gilbert and Long.
Cosden?
Gilbert and Long.
Covielo?
Gilbert and Long.
So, that's seven for Gilbert and seven for Long.
Just a quick question before we finalize that. Based on the fact that Mr. Gilbert is on another committee, do we need anything to do anything special?
Thank you. We would need a two-thirds majority vote when it comes time to cast the vote.
Okay, so we'd have to have two-thirds. Okay. All right, so I guess from there, we want to get a motion to nominate?
So moved.
Long?
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk, call to roll. Madam City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said motion to nominate, but it's actually a motion to approve Gilbert and Long for the alternate seats. Is that correct?
Correct, for the alternate seats.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Curiosa?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. And thank you all for applying. Mr. Orbaker, I'm sure there'll be other committees that we'd love to have you apply for, okay? So, please keep an eye open, and I'm sure we can find a place for you to go. Thank you for being here. Okay, let's move on to item nine, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 18-20. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 18-20. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the San Carlos Canal right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 38 through 39, Block 98, Cape Coral, Unit 2, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 38 and 39, Block 98, Cape Coral, Unit 2, Part 2, property located at 4980 Seville Court, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Catherine Wellner, and I'm a planner with the City of Cape Coral.
For the record, my name is Catherine Wellner and I'm a planner with the City of Cape Coral. This is a vacation case submitted by the property owner, Cape Seville LLC, who is represented by Windward Construction, to vacate a portion of platted canal right-of-way and associated easements and platted rear easement. So the subject property, oh, the subject property previously hosted a single-family residence that has been demolished. The current property owner is hoping, whoops. I apologize for that. So, this is just background information, general information on the application. So, the subject property's previously hosted a single-family residence that has been demolished. The current property owner is hoping to construct a new single-family residence on the site. The image on the screen shows the plat of the subject property. Notice that in the plat, this is the subject property, the canal abuts the rear property line. This is how most of the platted canals are depicted in the plats, however, it's not always how these were constructed. So, in this case, the subject property's rear property line is about 5.7 feet from the existing seawall. This is common discrepancy throughout the city. The property owners are requesting to vacate a portion of the platted canal right-of-way and the underlying easements between the rear property line and the existing seawall and the platted rear easement in order to create a larger buildable area for the proposed single-family residence. The Land Use and Development Regulations, LEDR for short, Section 8.11, includes seven requirements for vacation applications. The following are those standards. So number one, the applicant provided a deed for the subject property showing ownership, so they meet the first standard. Number two, the applicant provided a sketch of the proposed vacation based on the survey, which shows all of the platted lots of record, which they did. Numbers three through six require letters of approval from the utility companies potentially impacted by the vacation request. The applicant has provided letters of approval from Lee County Electric Cooperative, which is LCEC, Embark Corporation, which is CenturyLink and Comcast. Regarding city utilities, public works, planning, fire, and site and development, reviewed the vacation request with no objections, so they also met that requirement. And the seventh and last requirement is to provide a boundary survey of the property, which the applicant has provided in their application materials. Neither the canal right-of-way nor the easements proposed to be vacated will be needed to meet or fulfill any foreseeable public purpose. The property owner does not propose any changes to the location of the seawall as it is existing, so navigating the canal will not be impacted and approval of this request should not be harmful to the community. This request is consistent with the public interest in that it will make the property lines more consistent with the location of the canal and the adjacent properties. The comprehensive plan does not specifically address vacation plat of single-family residential properties and because no standards exist, staff reviewed consistency more generally for the comprehensive plan and this vacation request is also, is consistent with chapters one, two, and four of the comp plan regarding capital improvements, concurrency, conservation and coastal management, and the future land use element. So, because staff has found that the applicant has met the application requirements, the utility companies do not have any existing utilities and the easement proposed for vacation and there is no foreseeable public purpose of the easement, staff recommends approval of this vacation with five conditions that were included in the staff report.
Thank you. We'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 18-20, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearings closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
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 Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Kiriosha?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Let's go on Resolution 23-20. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 23-20. A resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Triton Canal right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 75 through 77, Block 101, Cape Coral, Unit 2, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 75 through 77, Block 101, Cape Coral, Unit 2, Part 2, property located at 5021 Sorrento Court, providing an effective date.
If you'd like, I can administer the oath.
Yes, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is a vacation request. The property is located at 5021 Sorrento Court. This property has single-family zoning as well as single-family future land use. The applicants are Craig and Ellie Simone. So they are requesting to vacate 621.48 square feet of Triton Canal right-of-way as well as 621.48 square feet of underlying easements. Additionally, 556.6 square feet of platted easements associated with the east property line of lots 75 through 77. So this site has about 185 feet of waterfrontage along Triton Canal and there's a strip of dry land that exists between the property line and the seawall. The applicants seek to vacate the right-of-way and underlying easements to extend their site to the edge of the seawall. Here's a sketch showing the small piece of land that they are requesting to vacate. So our analysis of the vacation of the right-of-way, we find the right-of-way is too narrow to provide a tangible benefit to the public. There's no apparent reason for the city to main this small strip of land as right-of-way and this vacation will enlarge the site by over 600 square feet. Vacation of easements, we find utilities are absent in all the easements. The three utility providers do not object to this request and the owner will deed to the city a replacement easement to provide a continuous perimeter easement around the So here's just a sketch showing the portion of the existing PUE that will be vacated and then right next to that, you have the perimeter easement that will be deeded back to the So staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the resolution and a hearing was held on December 3rd. The hearing examiner also recommends approval of this and we have not received any correspondence to this case. I stand up for questions.
Thank you. We'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 23-20, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearings now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Kiriosha?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Let's go on ordinance 58-19. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 58-19. An ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from open lands and wetlands, a Lee County designation, to open space land use for property located in sections 17, 20, 21, and 22, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, City of Cape Coral, Lee County, Florida. From open lands and wetlands, a Lee County designation, to single-family land use for property located in sections 17, 20, and 21, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, City of Cape Coral, Lee County, Florida. From open lands and wetlands, a Lee County designation, to single-family and multifamily land use for property located in section 22, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, City of Cape Coral, Lee County, Florida. All as more particularly described herein. Property located north of Jacaranda Parkway and Wilmington Parkway and the east of Burnstour Road, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Chad Voyko, Principal Planner with the City's Planning Division. This is a privately initiated, large-scale future land use map amendment that is before you tonight for a transmittal hearing. The process for these transmittal hearings for anything that is a future land use map amendment, anything over 10 acres, is we have a transmittal hearing with the City Council and then we send a, the packet or the ordinance up to the state of Florida for their review and then if they have given their thumbs up to that packet that is sent up there, then it comes back to the City Council for an adoption hearing at a later date. That being said, this is a, this is ordinance 58-19. The applicant for this is GA Pinnacle Cape Coral LLC. The location is northwestern Cape Coral, north of Jacaranda Parkway and east of Burnstour Road. The size of the site is 1,238 acres and it's within the urban services reserve area. As you can see here in the aerial in front of you, it's a large site. It is currently undeveloped. It's a mixture of a few different types of terrain, including open lands, some wetlands, and some marshes. Here you have, before you have the current future land use and then the current zoning map. This was a site that was annexed into the City of Cape Coral over a decade ago. Being as that has been annexed and there has not been a future land use application or a zoning application, it retains a current future land use designation and zoning designation from Lee County. The current future land use designation is a mixture of open lands and wetlands and then the zoning was agricultural zoning from Lee County. The applicant has requested three separate future land use designations. First, they have asked for 53.2 acres to be converted to the single-family slash multifamily or SM future land use designation. That's indicated in the lighter yellow. I'll kind of point to it on the arrow here. It's a little hard to distinguish some of the colors, but it is the southeastern portion of the property that is north of a festival park area. They've asked for 571 acres to be converted to the single-family future land use designation. That's the large area of yellow that's in the middle of the property. And then they've also asked for 613 acres to be designated as open space and that is indicated on the blue on your screen before you. That would be converted to the open space designation. As we mentioned earlier, this is a large site, over 1,200 acres. It was annexed into Cape Coral as part of the Zimmel voluntary annexations in 2006. We mentioned that it has a future land use designation from Lee County of open lands and wetlands. For, per those designations, you're looking at a maximum density of one dwelling unit between 10 and 20 acres for those designations. They're considered rural designations, so they were allowing for low-density residential and agricultural uses in those future land use designations. And then it had a Lee County zoning designation of agricultural, AG2. Staff's findings is that it's undeveloped, there's undeveloped preservation land to the north and to the east that is owned by the state of Florida. There's undeveloped land and single-family homes to the south and to the west of the site. The applicant submitted an environmental survey. They found three protected species that were observed. One was the gopher tortoise, another was a little blue heron, and another was a tricolored heron. The topography of the site is a mixture of pine flatwoods, marshes, open lands, and wet prairies. The environmental study indicated that there's approximately 700 acres of the site that are hydrolic and likely contain wetlands and there are various trails that you can see on the site that are likely from ATV usage over the years. Additional findings of fact, the applicant's asking for this, they've indicated this in a letter of intent, they're looking to establish these future land use designations in order to develop a master planned community. The development would include additional parcels owned by the applicant and there's also a parcel that is owned by the ICs of Venice, which is currently within an unincorporated Lee County, which could be utilized for any future development of the, of the site. We looked at this, we analyzed the future land use map amendment according to our comprehensive plan. The first chapter that we looked at was the future land use element, which is in chapter four. We looked at the designations that the applicant was requesting. The first was a single-family designation. This policy states that densities within this designation are not to exceed 4.4 units per acre, except for the micro cottage communities. I just want to point out that we do not currently allow the micro cottage communities. That was just something that's within our comprehensive plan. If you looked at the density, the maximum density, along with the number of acres that the applicant was requesting for this designation, you'd be looking at a maximum single-family home development of 2,515 single-family homes. Future development of the site would require either a rezone or a planned unit development in order to achieve that density. The next we looked at was the single-family and multifamily residential designation. This allows for multifamily residential uses for properties greater or equal to 20 acres and it has a maximum density of 25 dwelling units per acre. If you looked at the 53 acres that they're asking for and you times that by the 25 dwelling units, you'd be looking at approximately 1,330 multifamily units. Once again, you would need a rezone or a PUD in order to achieve this development. And then the third category that they're seeking to amend the site to is the open space. This does not allow for dwelling units, non-residential floor area, or anything that requires a demand for public facilities. This open space designation allows for things such as lakes, preserves, stormwater treatment, and private recreation facilities. The next we looked at the multifamily locational guidelines for that 53 acres that they were seeking to amend to the single-family slash multifamily and we found that the site meets two of the four multifamily locational guidelines. The site has potential access from Chiquita Boulevard and the proposed single-family multifamily portion of the site exceeds three acres in size. However, we found that the site does not meet the guidelines regarding proximity to existing multifamily residential and the buffering of non-residential uses, primarily because there's no surrounding multifamily in the area and there is also no non-residential uses for this development to buffer in that area. We also looked at policy 4.1, which states that future development requiring access or connection to public water and sewer facilities will be located within either the urban services infill or transition areas. Staff's response is that water and sewer is currently not available to the site. The developer would be responsible for any future utility connection and then the developer provided infrastructure could qualify for the transition designation on the site. Next policy is 4.4. It talks about how they can acquire the urban service transition area designation and then once again, it would have to be either through developer-provided utilities or an extension of the urban services transition area and the UEP. Policy 7.4, once again, talks again about the extension of utilities to this. Staff found that the UEP project is unlikely to reach the site in the near future, which may require that the developer provide utilities to the site. Staff also notes that the closest facility that provides either water or sewer is the North Cape RO plant, which is approximately 5,000 linear feet away from the nearest border of the site. Policy 7.7 talks about density incentives for assemblage of land in the urban services reserve area. Staff finds that the aggregation of land is over 20 acres and therefore they would qualify for 16 dwelling units per acre. Policy 7.10 talks about leapfrog development within the urban services area, reserve area and staff finds that the site does have some characteristics of leapfrog development. There is a low amount of residential nearby and there is, you know, there's generally nothing that, there's not a lot of development in that area since it's so far north, there's no commercial, there's not a lot of residential in the area. Currently, the applicant has not stated a timeframe for development, so there could be the chance that more development occurs when this is actually developed that would reduce the leapfrog characteristics of the site. The next chapter we looked at was the conservation and coastal management element. Policy 1.1 states that Cape Coral will maintain or improve the environmental quality of estuarine waters within its jurisdiction and will prevent the degradation of adjacent water bodies. Staff finds that any development on the site would have to go through numerous agencies such as the Army Corps and the South Florida Water Management District. The applicant states in their letter of intent that they would try to protect natural flowways and that they will restore those flowways, but that have been disturbed from exotics and ATV usage over the years. Next policy is 1.2.2. Once again, talking about the required permits that's needed for any development. Staff finds that once again, you'll need, any development will require permits from numerous agencies going forward. Policy 1.2.16 requires that anything will, any development within a PUD or a site plan will need a protected species survey. They've currently submitted a species survey with this future land use map amendment application. However, you're going to require more updated surveys during any PUD or site plan review of the site. Policy 1.5.2 talks about the city continuing to preserve and protect wetlands. Staff notes that the site has requested a designation of open space in order to protect the large amount of wetlands that are currently on site. There could be some disturbance of the wetlands going forward, however, that would be dealt with from the associated agencies that regulate the disturbance of those wetlands. The next element is chapter three, which is the housing element. Policy 1.6 talks about anything that needs utilities will have to go through a certain review period. Staff finds that any development requiring utilities, they, the developer would be required to provide those to the site. Next is the recreation and open space element, policy 1.8, which provides standards for park and recreation facilities concurrency. Staff has found that the city is not currently concurrent for park and recreation facilities due to a number of factors such as rapid growth of the city, budgetary concern... due to a number of factors such as rapid growth of the city, budgetary concerns. Staff finds that any new development on the site would require demand for more park facilities. Staff notes that the recently passed GEO bond may help to alleviate the demand or need for parks within the city of Cape Coral. And then we also have the transportation element, which is policy 1.1.1, which discusses transportation concurrency requirements. Staff did an analysis that's found that the development, if it's built to its maximum potential, could add up to over 2,000 peak hour trips to the site and over 21,000 daily trips. Currently, all of the nearby roadways meet a minimum level of service of D. Future capacity would be required during, within studies during time of development. And the last thing we want to discuss, it was kind of brought up at the committee of the whole meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago, in regards to talking about the utility extension. Staff has concurred with other departments within the city, and utility extension could be funded through the following ways. You could have pre-assessment through the affected properties. The utilities could be cash-funded and then recovered through the utilities rate structure. The utilities could be debt-funded and then additionally also recovered through the utilities rate structure. This would be less impact on the rate payers. And then you could alter the UEP area to include the areas being discussed. And then lastly, the utilities could be provided by having developer-funded utilities with tax and/or impact fee concessions or abatements charged to that developer or the surrounding property owners. Staff's recommendation is approval of the future land use map amendment. We found that it's consistent with several policies at the comprehensive plan, and it would be compatible with the nearby surrounding residential area, and we recommend approval. This is also heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last hearing, and they recommended a vote of approval by seven to zero as well. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. Now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 58-19, please come forward.
Yes. All of these ordinance are going to be adopted by...
Sir, come to the podium so we can get your recording. Just give us your name first, please.
Hi. My name is Tony Plans. I lived here for 16 years. My question is on all this development, how the property taxes are going to be increased in the old properties or in the new properties? And that is very important that the council members take a good look at this in increasing the taxes of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 58-19?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For your record, I'm Russell Shrupp here on behalf of the applicant for this plan amendment, GA Pinnacle Cape Coral LLC. I'm here today with my client, David Krazgrun, also with our development team from Baraco Associates, Carl Baraco and Jen Sapon, and also Lauren Etinger from Passarella and Associates. We're available for questions. With this did come up at the committee of the whole a couple of weeks ago, and we went through it at that point briefly. It is an amendment for approximately 1,238 acres to the three land use classifications that Mr. Boyko indicated previously. At the committee of the whole meeting, there were a couple of issues that came up that I think we've made headway on addressing. The first was with regard to the commercial on the Burnstour area to the west of the subject property. That will be incorporated ultimately into the project boundary, but it is designated mixed use on the land use plan right now, and it is also zone commercial, and so we intend to incorporate that commercial aspect into the PUD as it moves forward here through the process. The other issue that came up with the committee of the whole meeting, and Chad touched on it briefly, was utilities. We do understand that there needs to be sewer and water extended to this project in order to accommodate the densities that are being sought. We also understand that the city has no plans at this point to extend the utilities, so that utilities will be in fact developer-funded, and we believe after a couple meetings with the city folks that we will be able to accomplish that as part of the PUD process and moving forward. So those were the issues that came up at the committee of the whole. As a reminder, I'll simply say this is a transmittal hearing only, so you're transmitting this to the state for review. It will come back later for adoption hopefully and be married up with the PUD application and other approvals, and hopefully sewer and water at that point as well. Again, our team is here. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 58-19?
Pasha Donaldson. I typically don't get involved with things like this, but I think my first meeting when I came to Cape Coral was kind of, we were in the boom of 2005, and I looked at the council and everything was growing, growing, and we were number two in the nation in growth. I would ask that this council think about the future. I want you to think about the problems you have because of what councils did before you, many councils did before you. So I want you to think 20 years from now, what decisions you're going to make that the councils will say, gee, what were they thinking? Why did they do this? And all of us live here, all of us love Cape Coral, so be careful what you wish for. We're not anti-growth, we're for smart growth. Where will the roads be? How will the water be? Think ahead. That was my father's favorite expression, "think ahead." So again, green space is important to Cape Coral. Are there plans? Do we have conservation plans? Do we have preservation plans? Are you going to be a little stricter on the codes on these large developments when it comes to conservation and green space, or will it be concrete? Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 58-19? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve transmittal?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. The open space designation, how is that different from the county's open space and wetlands designation? Because it's currently county, correct? And we're changing the land use?
Correct. Yeah. I am not an expert on what county comprehensive plan states. To my knowledge, the open space within, it's actually open lands within Lee County. It's not open space. Open lands allows for a sort of very sparse residential density. I believe it's usually ranging from like 10 to 20 acre, 10 to 20, one unit per 10 to 20 acres. So you have one home on a 10-acre site or one home on a 20-acre site. Our open space, that's open lands within Lee County. Our open space does not allow for commercial development. It doesn't allow for residential development, and it doesn't allow for any development that would create a need for public facilities such as water, sewer, roadways, electricity, things like that. It's really meant to be as a conservation, it's not, that's not our conservation designation, but open space is very restrictive on what you can put in there. It's nothing that would require water, sewer, utilities, things like that.
Okay. So when we're talking about this 1,238 acres, about half of those are going to be, are proposed to be open space?
Open space, correct.
Okay. Why not go farther and make that conservation land? Is that not possible in this case?
Well, that is what they requested for this. So we, you know, staff is usually not in the position of altering what, you know, someone's, you know, request is. They've asked for open space. Staff found that the open space was restrictive enough so that you wouldn't allow for any development within there. If they were, if the, if the land use was amended to open space, and then they wanted to perhaps change that in the future for development, then staff would look at that and would bring that to council in the future. But right now, the open space is restrictive enough that staff didn't find that there would be much change if it was preservation or conservation.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Gunter.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the parcel of that parallel Burnstour Road. It says that it's existing mixed-use preserve, and I would assume that is a county land use designation.
It's currently mixed use, yes. It's a, mixed use is the future land designation for that. The applicant's map was a little bit old, but currently, before you right here, you can see that it is mixed-use future land use designation.
And can you tell us the difference between the mixed use and the commercial professional?
Mixed use allows for a combination of non-residential and residential. It would require a, it would allow for 20% of that to be designated as non-residential, or I'm sorry, as residential. So you could have 80% commercial, 20% residential in some capacity. However, staff does note that the zoning of the site is commercial, which would only allow for non-residential development.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Terri Osha?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. At this point, I think we'll take a 10-minute break. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Bring the meeting back into order. We'll go on to ordinance 5-20. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 5-20, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 1 through 60, block 3786, unit 52, Cape Coral subdivision, as more particularly described herein. From commercial to single-family residential zone, property is located at 2,200 through 2312 Northwest 8th Terrace and 2,201 through 2313 Tropicana Parkway West, providing severability at an effective date.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. Good evening, counsel. For the record, Mike Struvie, planning team coordinator with the Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the city clerk's office. This is a public... a city-initiated rezoning request. The city is requesting to rezone one block in its entirety, block 3786, from the C or Commercial zoning district to the Single Family or R1 zoning district. Aerial map shows the subject block with all the individual parcels outlined in red. This particular block is located near the vicinity of Eldorado Boulevard and Tropicana Parkway well north of Pine Island Road. About half of the sites in this block are developed with single-family homes. The rest are undeveloped. You'll notice, as you look more globally around this entire block, that all the development within the general vicinity of this block is developed with single-family homes. There's no commercial development in this area, primarily due to the lack of centralized The future land use of the subject block, which is not shown on this slide, is single-family residential. The current zoning is commercial, or C, and the city is proposing to change the zoning of the subject block to R1 or to single-family residential to bring the zoning of this block into consistency with its future land use classification. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute or two. Again, this rezoning request involves one block in its entirety. There's 30 parcels, 15 of them currently have single-family dwellings. This block was inadvertently rezoned several months ago to the C district, and that was by ordinance 4-19. And that was on August 5th. And you'll also recall that on August 5th, that was when the new Land Development Code was adopted. And that was a fairly substantial rezoning at the time. Ordinance 419 involved the rezoning of several thousands of acres in the city. In terms of our analysis on this request, we've analyzed this request consistent with provisions contained in Articles 3 and 4 of the Land Development Code. First of all, in terms of summarizing our analysis, the characteristics of the subject sites are most suitable for uses allowed in the single-family residential zoning district. The reasons for this are all of these properties are relatively small, under 11,000 square feet. None of the sites have centralized utilities, which also makes developing these sites commercially challenging. The site or the block has a high percentage of the sites developed with a single-family homes as well. The uses allowed in the R1 district will be compatible with the uses not only that are established within the subject block, but also in the immediately surrounding blocks as well that consist exclusively of single-family homes. The proposed R1 district is consistent with the single-family future land use classification, unlike the C zoning district. And the rezone will serve a community need by bringing the zoning into consistency with the future land use classification and allow property owners within the subject block to pull permits either to develop their sites, presumably with single-family homes, or to redevelop their sites. And I do want to add too that even though the current zoning is commercial, we don't see this as diminishing our commercial lands inventory, one because of the error was made. It was never our intention to zone the site to C in the first place, but in addition to that, because of the single-family future land use classification that exists for the entire block. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. A public hearing was held before the hearing examiner on December 3rd, and the hearing examiner recommended approval. There were no speakers at public input, nor have we received any correspondence in regards to this request. And I'll stand by in case you have questions.
Thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 5-20, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Karyosha?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Let's go on to ordinance 9-20. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 9-20, an ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as lots 21 through 22, block 5449, Cape Coral, unit 90 pursuant to Section 2-155 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute a deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Kimberly A. Panino and Jeffrey S. Panino, providing severability at an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division. Excuse me. Ordinance 9-20 is to authorize the sale of a city surplus property located at 4,208 Northwest 36th Lane to Mr. and Mrs. Panino. The property is a waterfront site located to the east of the Crystal Lake, future Crystal Lake Park. The property is located over here. Property was declared surplus in November 2018 and is under contract for $85,000. I stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 9-20, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve, transmittal?
So moved.
You have a second? Any discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Just to clarify with real estate, is this just... this isn't a transmittal one?
No, it's just to authorize the sale of the property.
Got a misprint. Okay, sorry.
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve acquiring the property?
Selling the property.
Selling the property.
Selling it. We're gonna... we're the seller on the property. It's a surplus property.
So I had the motion maker. Councilman Karyosha?
Absolutely.
You agree? Who was the second? Councilman Stout? Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Karyosha?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's go on to ordinance 10-20. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 10-20, an ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as lot 47, block 5257, Cape Coral Spreader Waterway Platte pursuant to Section 2-155 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute a deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Michael J. Humphrey and Linda J. Humphrey, trustees of the Humphrey Living Trust, providing severability at an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Again, Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division. Ordinance 10-20 is to authorize the sale of the property at 1729 Northwest 41st Avenue to Mr. and Mrs. Humphrey. And you can see it there on the corner. This is Gulfstream Boulevard, whoops. Gulfstream is down here. Auburn Sternard Road is over here. In December 2019, the City Council had approved the sale of this property to the Humphreys under ordinance 59-19. The 2019 contract had a feasibility study period with it, and when the Humphreys were performing several tests, they did a soil boring test and they had an environmental review of the property, it was found that there were two gopher tortoise nests on the site. Now although those nests seem to be inactive, the nests need to be cleared in order for them to properly build. They need to be properly removed. So they got some cost estimates, and the cost estimates came in around $10,000 to have the two nests removed from the site. I did ask our staff to take a look at those. Those were reasonable figures. The Humphreys came back to me and asked for a change in the contract purchase price. So the original purchase price was at $200,000. After some negotiations and in order to bring it forward, because it was brought forward under an ordinance originally, in order to change anything on the contract, it had to come back as an ordinance. So timing, because the two meetings were back-to-back in January, I wasn't able to get everything on. And so we intro'd last week, the vote is this week, and the contract had actually expired. The 2019 contract expired at the end of January. So it's a new contract at $190,000, which is also the appraisal amount of the property. I stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 10-20, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a second? Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Karyosha?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Covielo?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's go on, 9B is Introductions. Ordinance 7-19. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 7-20, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 23 through 42, Block 4415, Unit 63, Cape Coral subdivision. As more particularly described herein, from neighborhood commercial to commercial zone, property is located at 1606 through 1616 Southwest 15th Place and 1609 Chiquita Boulevard South, providing severability at an effective date. The public hearing will be March 2nd, 2020.
Thank you. Any discussion? None? Okay, let's go on. Sorry about the misprint. I had 719 on that, on my paper, so it's 720, right? Next one's 820? Ordinance 8-20. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 8-20, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial, a Lee County designation, to Pine Island Road District land use for property lying in Section 4 Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, property located at 1570 Orchid Road, 2500 Northeast Pine Island Road, 2560 Northeast Pine Island Road, providing severability at an effective date. The public hearing will be March 2nd, 2020.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 10, unfinished business. Water quality, Mr. Klingon?
Yes, thank you, Paul Klingon, Public Works. Not too many changes from last week. Lake of Cochobee is approximately 13 feet. It was about .25 feet lower last year. Pulse releases from the Army Corps is about 650 CFS. Last year was 1,000 CFS. There has been limited blue-green algae observed at the Alva Boat Ramp and Franklin Lot this week. Nothing to worry about. And Red Tide, 14 of 15 samples were not present as far as any issues. There was one very low sample at Gasparilla Sound. So water quality continues to be very good.
Thank you. Item 10B, anybody have any follow-up items? 10C, I think we really covered Tropicana Park during the public input. Does anybody have any discussion, anything they'd like to add? Okay, let's go on to 10D, update on the ongoing investigations, current status, estimated completions. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have spoken with Deborah Brown, the attorney who's doing the investigation. She has informed me that two of the prongs of the investigation that council engaged her to perform are nearing completion and will probably be done and ready for review this week, later this week. The other two, which are still being investigated by the FDLE, as council is aware, she has not begun the administrative part, any administrative investigation there. So my question for council this evening is, do you want to receive these different prongs of the investigation as she completes them, or do you want to hold off and receive them only at the end when she is done with all of them? Bear in mind, whatever decision you make tonight, if you choose to make a decision about that tonight, you would be able to change at a later date if you desire to do so.
Any discussion on that? Does anybody want them? Councilmember Karyosha?
I would like to get the entire package completed as an investigation is over with. That's my point of view. I don't want to piecemeal this. I want to be able to sit there and digest it from beginning to end, whatever we have. Just one man's opinion.
Councilmember Stout?
I at first leaned toward getting them as they were completed, but then I, the more I thought about it, since she is projected to do all four, that it might be better since they might overlap if we get all of them at the same time. So I would agree with Councilmember Karyosha.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also thought at first that maybe as they were completed, but after considering longer, I think I agree with, I know that I agree with Councilmember Karyosha and Councilmember Stout, wait till we have the entire packet so that we can make a completely informed decision about it.
Madam City Attorney?
So if that's the council's pleasure, I will advise Ms. Brown of that. Bear in mind, if, as time goes by, depending on how long the FDLE investigation takes, for example, if council wants to reconsider this, and I don't mean reconsider in the formal sense, but if you say, well, we've decided we would prefer to receive them in parts, then you would be able to do that. But for right now, what I'm hearing from council is, it's council's preference that we not receive them, the two that are nearing completion, but rather that she hold off on that until she's complete with all prongs.
Do we have any anticipated timeline as to when the entire investigation? I know it was brought forward about a month ago with the expectation that it would take two to four weeks to complete the entire investigation. Do we have any timeline, or are we just stuck because FDLE is still doing their investigation and she can't move on hers until that's completed?
Well, when we estimated the two to four weeks, council may recall that that was dependent upon the FDLE's investigation and whether they were going to be doing one and if so, over what period of time. And I know that she has been in communication with the investigator from FDLE. I will revisit with her the idea of whether there's any part of that investigation she thinks she could do in the meantime. But I know that as of right now, she has held off doing that because of the ongoing FDLE investigation.
There were another investigation regarding the Finance Department. Do we have any update on that one, which was being conducted by the Police Department?
I don't have an update on that, but I believe Chief Newell may.
Chief Newell, Cape Coral Police Department. Right now, we're, she's been collecting all the documentations for the Finance Department. We're getting ready to start interviews, as you know, as mentioned before in our discussions today. One of the things we're waiting on was the auditor to finish their fact finding on the numbers. So that was part of that process and make sure we would find nothing criminal before we can move on to the next investigation. I would request as part of that deal, and I'll ask the governing body here, that we would request a copy of that final audit report. That would help assist us in our investigation, because if something's already been done or has been a finding by the auditor, that has helped expedite our investigation as well, as well as any transcripts or statements from the attorney in Tampa. Also, if they've interviewed the same people and it does cross over to our investigation, all this does assist us in getting done even quicker.
Would that information remain confidential within the Police Department, or would it be open for subject to public record, or what do we, because I know the auditor's report's been issued and it's been labeled confidential at this point based on improving the processes in the Finance Department. So where would we be with that?
It would remain confidential. In fact, I would only ask you that it would go to Sergeant McDonald only and not even me, just the investigator.
Thank you. Councilmember Karyosha?
I would like to agree with the chief on this. All persons involved must be available to the investigators for interview, and any and all documents must be available to both the chief's investigators as well as the other side. If they're looking into wrongdoing, they'll be able to compare some information. These people are sworn, they're certified, they are hired by us, they're not going to be running to the media with the information. So I think as part of the entire investigation, that all documents be submitted to the investigators so they can put it inside the completed investigation.
Great. So you would be in agreement that the investigation completed by Chief Lamb should be made available to council as well?
Well, if it's ready and it's available, yes. I don't have a problem with any completed investigation coming to us. That's what we're here for.
Okay. I see Chief Lamb's right there.
Brian Lamb, Fire Chief. We've completed a preliminary investigation from the fire department's perspective of the issue that we were asked to inquire into. After meeting with the adjudicators, and there were some questions that I couldn't answer, and so I've got follow-ups scheduled this week to get the answers to those additional pieces. And so we'll get that finished up here hopefully in the next two weeks.
So once that's finished up, it'll be provided to each and every council member as well?
Once it's completed, it'll be provided to the city manager, the adjudicator, to review that.
And release it to the council? Mr. City Manager?
That's something that I would do. And if you'd like a copy of it, I'll be happy to provide the entire city council with that result of that investigation.
Thank you. Councilmember Karyosha?
That was my question to the city manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam City Attorney?
I'm sorry, were you planning on taking a vote on council member's motion, or are we, should I just direct Ms. Brown to go ahead and share all information with the Police Department?
I think we've got enough of a census to see that. We just want to get it shared all in one report that comes forward once it's completed.
You've already decided, I think, I understood that, that you wanted to come forward to you as one report, one full report with four prongs to it.
Correct.
My question to you is, should I contact Ms. Brown? Am I hearing that the council wants her to share the transcripts with the Police Department, understanding that when they are shared that way, any part of them that becomes a part of their investigation will remain confidential and exempt until such time as any administrative disciplinary proceedings are complete, if any, as a result of the Police Department's investigation? That's all. I just need to know what to tell Ms. Brown.
My preference is that particular investigation comes to council first for our discussion at a meeting to determine what we do with it after that.
I thought, I thought the question was about the audit, about.
Yeah, that's a separate report.
And if that's the one I believe should go to the police chief.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, so I will instruct Ms. Brown that you want all of the four prongs when they're all complete, and that currently I will not instruct her to share any part of the, any part of the transcripts or anything like that with the Police Department until after they're complete and are submitted to the council.
Correct. That's the way I would see it.
All right. Thank you.
And the auditor, Andrea, you'll release that report to Alicia McDonald, her only. Any other discussion? Okay, does anybody have any new business? Go on to reports. Councilmember Gunter, report.
Real quickly, February 4th, I attended the CRA meeting. February 6th, I had a staff meeting regarding the 6040 regulation, and we're still working on that with staff and a stakeholders group. And also on February 10th, which was today, I attended the Budget Review Committee meeting this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing. Last Friday, I presented to the Gold Coast Rotary Club on High Level three main topics about the city, and it was a great group, and they had some really good questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Stout?
The question I have is that on Wednesday, I will be attending a liaison to the Audit Committee. I will be attending their meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
No report.
Councilmember Karyosha?
No report.
Councilmember Cosden?
No report.
During the week, last week, I had the opportunity to go to a combination of two groups that merged, two Republican women's groups that merged together. Was able to be there that night and see that and congratulate them on creating one club. This upcoming week, I'm going to be at the Cape Coral Fire Department Ceremony in recognition. Chief Lamb, I'm looking forward to that. There'll be a Women's Council of Realtors event for the mayors of Lee County. I'm going to be at the CCCIA Dinner Meeting. I'm going to ride in the Festival of Lights at the Grand Parade over in Fort Myers, and I'll be at Taste of the Cape at Top and Point Marina. Ms. Menendez, report?
I have no report.
Mr. Zerlag?
I met with staff last week to talk about items for the Cow Meetings coming up, and what we'd like to do is have a Cow Meeting in March on the charter school issue. But for February, at this point in time, I have nothing. I can go back and talk to staff again tomorrow at staff meeting, but if they don't have anything of substance, I'm going to request that we not have a Cow Meeting unless anyone on council has a topic. Thank you.
Councilmember Gunter?
Not in reference to the Cow Meeting, but just a quick question. I knew we've had some discussion about quality of life issues, parking of trucks with littering and things like that. Any of that coming forward back before council?
Let me inquire Vince Cotaro or Bob Peterson to see if they have an idea of when that'll be coming back, if I may.
Thank you.
And if they don't know, we'll find out tomorrow morning, and we'll advise council.
Vince Cotaro, Community Development Director. They're going to start making their way through the hearing examiner and, if required, and planning a zoning commission next month. And we have a chart that we're revising. We'll send it out to all the council members.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I've got, if you can't come up with an agenda for a Cow Meeting, I've got a couple of items that maybe we can look at. One is, we haven't talked in a while about what to do with the Irma hurricane reimbursement money. That's been a while since we talked about that. And I know the last time we had a Cow on it and we didn't really zero in on what we were going to do and where we were at, whether it be with, you know, the fields or the charter schools or whatever we were going to do with that. I think we can come back to a Cow Meeting and discuss that issue again. I also think that there's some rules and regulations that are being considered regarding seawalls that can be talked about as well, as to where we want to go and what direction we want to go in with that. And also talk about the staging area over at Everest. Is that a reality? Can that be something that we can make available to the contractors, since they're running out of staging areas? seawalls that can be talked about as well, as to where we want to go and what direction we want to go in with that. And also talk about the staging area over at Everest. Is that a reality? Can that be something that we can make available to the contractors since they're running out of staging areas in that part of the city? Those are a couple of things that I think we can create. Does council have any other areas that they'd like to see discussed? And I might be able to come up with some more.
Thank you. And if I may, we'll be happy to have an update on Hurricane Irma funding as well as the staging area. I need to talk with Paul Klingon because he's doing some work on seawalls. I don't want to usurp any work they're doing with the contractors at this point in time.
Okay.
But those are the two items, absolutely.
Okay.
So I guess we're on for the 24th and on those topics.
Well, I think they're looking to change some of the regulations regarding the heights of the seawalls and what the impact would be to neighboring properties that have a lower height, things of that nature. I'd rather see us talk about it before we go out and create something like last time where we had a whole bunch of seawall contractors that were not happy with what we were looking at. The cost would be passed on to the residents. So I think it's an area that can be discussed potentially at a Cow.
Sure. We can have, again, if you don't mind, we can talk about, in generalities, what you want to see for the heights of walls and so forth.
Yeah, definitely, because it's a lot at stake.
Any other discussion? Time and place of future meetings, a committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 4:30 in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.